We have three public hearings before we start the city council meeting tonight. So we'll start with the first one, which is the Inland Lakes Protection and Rehabilitation District Public Hearing and Annual Meeting. So the public hearing comes first. I'll call that public hearing to order. In attendance, we have all the persons, I guess they're commissioners on the Inland Lakes District, but we have Dykstra, Martin, Mayo, Olson, Peterson, I'm going to do it again, Nagel, Porczatski, Velicker, and then also Alderperson. Hagan is online with us, of course, we are, we have one vacant seat at this time. So we do have a quorum. The purpose of this hearing, Barb, let me, tell me what pages, I don't have it. Well, in summary, the, the public hearing is to present the budget for the public, for the Inland Lakes. And you could see the estimated proposal and then also the actual amount from 2022. And so, Laura's going to go into detail once we get into the Inland Lakes meeting on what those dollar amounts are going to be, but there's a, going to be a property tax assessment of $10,000 for, proposed for next year, and then expenses that will match that amount or just a little bit above that. Thank you. So at this time, we would take testimony in favor of the budget for the Inland Lakes. If you would like to give testimony in favor, step up to the podium, give your name and address for the record, and limit your time there till three minutes or, three minutes or less. Anybody that would like to give public input in favor of the Inland Lakes budget? Seeing none, anybody that would like to give testimony in opposition? Again, hearing none, I'll declare this hearing closed at 6:03 PM. Next up, we have the, keep me on task here. Okay, so next we're going to another public hearing here. This is a public hearing on, so, okay, so that's what I was asking. All right. That's all right. All right, so I actually, we didn't prepare for this, did we, Barb? So we had the public hearing on the Inland Lakes, and so we're actually bound by law to have an annual meeting. Normally that meeting is in August. We met in August to propose, postpone that until this time. And so at this time, we're actually going to have the Inland Lakes Protection and Rehabilitation Annual District Meeting. So I'll call this meeting to order. And again, in attendance are the same individuals, including myself. We have an agenda that you have in your packet. I would need, and you are considered commissioners on this board, on this committee, so I would need a motion from one of the commissioners to approve the agenda as printed. Help me out here, you guys.
So moved.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Motion by Velicker, second by Olson, that we approve the agenda for the Inland Lakes Protection and Rehabilitation District Meeting as printed. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, say no. Motion carried. We had minutes of a meeting from August 16th of 2022, which is on page three of that packet. Again, these are, we just make a motion to approve to place these on file. So unless you see something that you would like changed, we would just need a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Martin, second by Peterson, that we approve of the minutes of the annual meeting on August 16th, 2022, and place those on file. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, say no.
Aye.
Thanks, Paul, sorry, I'll slow down a little bit. Motion carried. Then, next up, we have Resolution Number IL-52, which is actually the budget for the next year, 2024, and Laura is going to handle that.
Sure, so I'll give you a little background on some of the things that are going on. First, I'd like to thank the Friends of Meereen Shadow Lake Group, which has really, really grown this year, and then our Inland Waters Committee, which has been really instrumental in helping with the budget and to ask really good questions and to move forward with our waterways in the city. So a few of the things that we're working on with Friends of Meereen Shadow Lake, a big concern is that the channel is filling in with sand. And so we've met with the DNR and the county, and they have a number of priorities for us on how to mitigate the sand going into the channel. And that includes looking at our beach house and potentially getting gutters and drains, sodding and fencing the hillside, and putting a, more of an erosion barrier with topsoil and potentially berms close to the channel to, to mitigate that wind that really blows in the winter time, or, sorry, the sand that really blows into the channel in the winter. And then to put a lot more native plants there. So those are some of the steps we're going to take there. Geese have become a major factor in our waterways this last year. Our beach staff alone have picked up anywhere from seven to eight buckets of goose feces a day compared to one. So we are looking at doing some sort of goose roundup in the future. We're talking about if we can stock fish in the lake, so I'm going to look at that over the winter. We are going to continue to monitor and take measures to eradicate the Eurasian water milfoil and to decrease the amount of invasive cattails, and we're going to keep our eyes on the fish sticks and add more if necessary. Now, another thing that the Inland Waters brought up is potentially looking at the city drains and how we can better educate so that we have cleaner drains, and that goes into our waterways. So with the Inland Waters Committee, we thought the following items would be great for the budget for this following year, or for 2024. We are going to look at a goose roundup. The price for that is confirmed at $3,500, and we will see if other organizations or businesses want to help cost share on that, who might also be impacted by having a large amount of geese. We need to continue to do our water testing, which equals $1,600. And according to our lake management plan that we put together, we need to conduct a point intercept survey this year, and the estimate I got on that is $4,000. So between the goose, or the geese, the water testing and the point intercept survey, the total for the budget looks like $9,100. And, and we can also look for grants for the point intercept survey. So this would be the maximum that we would be requesting to use.
All right, thank you, Laura. Laura, can you address the 2022 actual, is that where we think we're going to end up? So all the expenses have been expended for the year, and so we're actually not going to use up all of the expenses that we were expecting?
That's correct. So our fund balance at the end of 2022 is $15,169, and right now, we're looking at a fund balance at the end of this year of around $24,462.
So if you look at the first column, you could see that up on your screen there, everybody, that's actually what we're looking at. We're looking at the 2024 proposed budget, where again, we're, we are taxing for $10,000. Now remember, this is its own taxing authority, so you will see this as a separate line on your property tax statement, cover that tax that we need to assess. And then Laura explained the expenses that we have there, and that they are also looking for grants to try and help offset some of those costs. Anybody have any questions, Laura? Anybody like to make a motion to approve the, the budget for 2024?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Martin, second by Olson, that we approve Resolution Number IL-52, which is the budget for 2024. Any discussion, further discussion? If not, Barbara will call a roll.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Henry Velicker?
Aye.
Scott Porczatski?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Corey Nagel?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Colin Dykstra?
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
All right, Laura, thank you, good job.
Thanks.
We need a motion to adjourn this meeting then.
Move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Motion by Velicker, you want a second, Paul?
Yes, please.
Okay, second by Hagan, that we adjourn the City of Wapaka Inland Lakes Protection and Rehabilitation District Meeting until next annual meeting, which is set for August 20th of '24, subject to call. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Against, say no. Motion carried. All right, now let's go to, we have two more public hearings here. The first one is a public hearing, an ordinance amending Chapter 17.104, parent three. This is for permitted uses and conditional uses pertaining to solar array and zoning code. And again, in attendance, we have the same council members that were at the Inland Lakes meeting. So we do have a quorum listening to the public hearing. And the purpose of the hearing, and Jarrett, I'm hoping you can help us out here.
Of course. This one starts on page 53 of your packets. This is essentially adding solar arrays to our zoning code as a possible land use, and that would be in the agricultural and I-2 districts.
All right, thank you. So at this time then, we would take testimony in favor of this ordinance amendment to Chapter 17. If you would like to say anything, testimony in favor of this, step up to the podium, give your name and address for the record, limit your time to three minutes or less. Anybody that would like to give testimony in favor of the amendment to this ordinance? Anybody that would like to make testimony in favor of? Hearing none, do we have any testimony in opposition? Any testimony in opposition? All right, I declare this hearing closed at 6:14 PM. One more public hearing. Next up, we have a public hearing, this is an ordinance amending Chapter 17.603 Parking Requirements and Chapter 17.606 Driveways Zoning Code. I'll call this public hearing to order. Again, same individuals are in attendance, we have a quorum that is attending this public hearing. And again, Jarrett, if you could just give the purpose of this hearing.
Of course. This one's on page 55 of your packets. Essentially, this is a cleanup of the zoning code. Upon doing one of our reviews, a conflict came up that our zoning code said one thing and our Department of Public Works code said another. So with driveways in the kind of right-of-way aprons, you know, going into somebody's private driveway, with that being in the right-of-way, staff felt it was best to keep it in the Public Works code. So the zoning code is simply being changed to reference the Public Works code. So just cleanup, keep everything consistent.
All right, thank you for that explanation. Jarrett, at this time, we would take testimony in favor of the amendment, ordinance amendment to Chapter 17 of the zoning code. Anybody that would like to make testimony in favor of, step up to the podium, give your name and address for the record, limit your time to three minutes or less. Any testimony in favor of? Any testimony in favor of? Hearing none, do we have any testimony in opposition? Any testimony in opposition? I declare this hearing closed at 6:16 PM. Again, both of those items will show up on your council agenda later on in the meeting tonight. All right, let's get to the regular council then. So I will call this regular city council meeting to order. Today is November 7th, 2023, it's 6:16 PM, and as also always, we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, ever to be unjustified for all.
All right, Barb, could you read the clerk's opening statement for us?
Sure. This meeting and all meetings of the common council are open to the public. Proper notice has been posted and given to the media in accordance with Wisconsin state statutes, so the citizens may be aware of the time, place, and agenda of this meeting.
Thanks, Barb. And would you also take a roll?
Mayor Smith?
Here.
Colin Dykstra?
Here.
Paul Hagan?
Here.
Henry Velicker?
Here.
Scott Porczatski?
Here.
Dave Peterson?
Here.
Paul Mayo?
Here.
Dimitri Martin?
Here.
Corey Nagel?
Here.
Eric Olson?
Here.
Nine ayes, we have a quorum.
All right, and then next up is the introduction of the department heads that are at the meeting tonight, and so we'll start with you, Barb.
Barb Noack, City Clerk.
Erin Johnson, City Administrator.
Matt Clatt, Airport Manager.
Eric Bailey, Library Director.
Jared Kivala, Community and Economic Development.
Stephanie Reif, Finance Director.
Justin Behrens, Director of Public Works.
Laura Colbert, Parks and Rec Director.
Brian Hozel, Chief of Police.
Thanks, Brian. And Josh is with us, Josh Warner is with us, he's in the back room tonight. So welcome, everybody, to tonight's meeting. We have, again, some cleanup things we need to do before we continue, but the first thing on the agenda is the consent agenda. This is a agenda of items that we take with just one motion, unless council or a department head would like to see one of those items moved to the regular agenda where we would take those items individually. Unless I hear that one of those items should be changed, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as printed.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Martin, second by Peterson, that we approve the consent agenda as printed. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, say no. Under regular agenda, Barb has indicated to us that the agenda is unchanged, so again, we would need to move forward, we would need a motion to approve that.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Olson, second by Peterson, that we approve the regular agenda as printed. Discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Against, say no. Motion carried. Non-agenda items, page 49 shows, sorry for the ayes. This is a proclamation designating December 1st, 2023, as our Christmas Stamp Day in Wapaka, Wisconsin, and we've read this over the last three or four years. Again, the request is that we approve this proclamation again for this year, and so I would ask that we, I guess we don't even, we just want to make sure that everybody understands that that proclamation is in place again for 2023. Next up, public input. This is for non-agenda items. If there's anybody in the audience, or if staff or council members would like to talk to us on a non-agenda item, please step up to the podium and limit your time, again, to three minutes or less, but again, this is on non-agenda items. Anybody that would like to speak to the council on a non-agenda item? All right, under new business, we have License Report Number 1646. This is a Class B intoxicating liquor license and Class B fermented malt beverage license for 2181 Apple Tree Lane, and the new licensee on that would, his name is Kurt Plommon. Kurt is actually in the audience tonight. And so, Barb, anything special we need to do here? Sure, yeah.
The only change is when I published the here, the notice, he had doing business as Skippers, and he's changing that to doing business as Whiskey Junction Food and Drink. But it doesn't need to be republished because his name is the same, it's just the doing business as. That's the only change.
All right, so all of us that are, that are council members that are here and also people that are listening, this is the Courtside Bar that's under new ownership, and this is the place that Barb is talking about. As I said, Kurt is in attendance, so I don't know if any council members have any questions of him tonight? Kurt, you want to say anything? It's your opportunity here.
Yeah, I'll say it. So I, I've been living here since 1989, so some of you guys know me, some of you guys know me a little bit. I worked at Kmart for seventeen and a half years. I also worked for Dollar General, and then Piggly Wiggly for the last eight years. So I've been in retail like for 35 years around the community and that, so, so I went from retail to owning a bar, so go figure, Otto. But, so I, like I said, I owned Skippers for about four and a half years over in Fremont. Recently just sold that business. Karen has given me an opportunity to take over this business here at Courtside, so she can retire down in Florida, and I definitely feel like that's, it's a good challenge for me, and I, I'm thinking we're making this bar better for the community, it's going to be a little upgraded, we're doing a lot of remodeling with the bar for people to come and sit and enjoy music and things like that, so, you know, I think it's going to be good for the community, so.
Thanks, Kurt.
That's all I got, yep.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions, comments? How about a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion by Peterson?
Second.
Second by Martin, that we approve License Report Number 1646, a Class B intoxicating liquor license and Class B fermented malt beverage license for 2181 Apple Tree Lane, Kurt Plommon as the agent. Any discussion? Barbara will call a roll.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Henry Velicker?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Scott Porczatski?
Aye.
Colin Dykstra?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Corey Nagel?
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
All right, Kurt, thank you. Karen, congratulations? Well, congratulations to both of you, let's put it that way. Next up, Yuletide Celebration 2023, artsy Christmas trees on the town square. I see that we have Barb Latkey is in attendance, and so I think I'll just turn it over to Barb.
I think you all have the letter that was sent regarding what these trees are. So this is the fifth year of the Wapaka Area Arts and Culture Network Yuletide Trail, and it's becoming a bigger event now, it's the Wapaka Yuletide Celebration. It's going to start with a Christmas parade on Thursday night, November 30th, and have a Friday night event at the library. And part of the event that we'd like to have, and why we're here, is because we would like to have 10 Christmas trees in front of the city hall library. We've solicited and received funding to purchase 10 real trees from Farmer State, Edony Realty, Waymont, Waypoint, Loot, and Revolve, and we're checking with you guys to see if setting up the trees and understanding how to light the trees. The Community Arts Board is the curating group from the network that's going to be working with these trees, so they're going to be really beautiful, and we've gotten permission from Eric Bailey at the library to distribute lights to those who are going to decorate it, and we're just asking for permission to do that.
Anybody have any questions, comments? Justin, we're, we're all understanding what, what's going on here with that?
Yeah.
You're okay?
Yep, we got a heads up, we're good to go.
Okay, all right. So again, hey, looking forward to the Yuletide Celebration this year, of course, and I think this will be a nice addition. So thank you. Again, we'd be looking for a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Olson, and second by Velicker, that we approve of this request to place Christmas, 10 Christmas trees on City Square. Any discussion? You know, does that mean there has to be president, presents under every one of those trees, Eric?
That's your job.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Against, say no. Motion carried. Barb, thanks for coming tonight, appreciate it. Next up, this is going to get turned over to Council President Paul Mayo, this is an appointment that I would like to make.
Thank you, Mayor. The mayor would like to appoint Stacy Nellis to the Emergency Management Committee. At this time, I need a motion and a second to approve the mayor's appointment.
Make a motion to approve the appointment of Stacy Nellis to the Emergency Management Commission, Committee.
Second.
Move by Velicker, second by Olson, to approve the mayor's appointment of Stacy Nellis to the Emergency Management Committee. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, no. Motion carries. Back to you, Mayor.
All right, thanks, Paul, appreciate it. Next up, number four, ordinance number 12, an ordinance amending Chapter 17, 12, whatever, amending Chapter 17.104, parent three, permitted uses and conditional uses pertaining to solar array zoning code. And this is a first reading, so Jarrett, if you would, again, just explain exactly what this is all about.
Happy to. This one's on page 53 of your packets, so this would be adding solar array as a possible land use within the city, as a principal primary land use in the agricultural and I-2 districts. This was recommended for approval from Plan Commission, and first reading.
All right, again, you can see on page 53 and 54 what this ordinance looks like, and it's set up in a nice format there. So again, this is first reading, council members, keep your ears open, if there's anybody that would like to discuss that with you in the public, so when we vote on it at our next meeting, which is the 21st of this month, you'll be prepared for that. Next up is ordinance number 13-23, it's an ordinance amending Chapter 17.603 of the parking requirements and Chapter 17.606 driveway zoning code. And again, Jarrett, this is you.
Of course, thank you. This one starts on page 55 of your packets, the red line should be on 57. Staff found a discrepancy between the zoning code and the Public Works code, given the topic of these requirements being more public works domain. The zoning code is being amended to reference the Public Works code to keep everything consistent. So there's really no changes with the code requirements, it's just cleanup to make sure that we're remaining consistent across all of our code sections.
Thanks, Jarrett. Anybody have any questions, Jarrett? And again, this is the first reading, so we will probably take this up at our, well, we will take this up at our next meeting, whether we vote on it or not, that's up to you, which will be on November 21st. All right, thank you, Jarrett, it looks like you're still up, though. Conditional use permit for the City of Wapaka at 111 South Main Street. Your go.
Thank you. This one's on page 59 of your packet, so this one actually, and the next agenda item, are both conditional uses. item, are both conditional uses, referring to the towers, communications towers that would be being put up at City Hall and the new Department of Public Works facility. So Josh Warner has already come forward, and I did include his piece of the packet, which he had brought forward to you guys at a past meeting, where he did get approval to move forward with bids or accept a bid for the towers. So in theory, this was already approved by the council, but staff does need to come behind now and complete the site plan, which has already been conditionally approved at Plan Commission, and then get approval for these conditional uses. So this, this one in particular is for one eleven South Main Street, so the tower that would go up here on the southeast corner of the building. It would be, once everything all said and done, it would be behind a fence, and it would be next to our other mechanical equipment there and that side of the building. So upon staff review, everything appeared compliant, and it's recommended from staff and Plan Commission for approval.
And Jared, we are taking these separately?
Yes.
Because of addresses?
Yep, because of addresses.
Okay. All right, so you heard Jared's explanation for the conditional use permit, it has to do with the tower, we would, he's recommending that we approve this conditional use permit.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion by Olson, second by Velicker that we approve the conditional use permit for the city of Wapaka, one eleven South Main Street. Any discussion? If not, Barbara call the roll.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Henry Velicker.
Aye.
Scott Porczatsky.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Corey Nagel.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Colin Dijkstra.
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
All right, and then going along that same line, then?
Yes, sir. So this next one is on page one seventy-four of your packets. This one's for five hundred Harding Street, this is the Department of Public Works facility, same style tower, same height, located on the, it would be more of the southeast corner of the building, one hundred and ten foot tower, it would also be.
Southwest.
Southwest. Thank you, Justin, I appreciate the assist there.
You're welcome, my good sir.
And that would also be behind landscaping that they are putting up for the new Department of Public Works building already, and fencing as well, so it would be also incorporated with some of their mechanical equipment, so. Staff and Plan Commission recommended approval for this one as well.
Thanks, Jared. Justin, any comments?
We're going to have some landscaping trees up front with a fence, so the screening part should be taken care of there.
Awesome. Again, Jared is recommending that we approve this conditional use permit, and it was approved by city planning, as he said. Anybody want to make a motion?
Make a motion, we approve the conditional use permit for five hundred Harding Street as presented.
Motion by Velicker, second by Hagan that we approve the conditional use permit for city of Wapaka, five hundred Harding Street. Any discussion? Barbara call the roll.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Henry Velicker.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Scott Porczatsky.
Aye.
Colin Dijkstra.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Corey Nagel.
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
All right, next up, we have wireless telecommunications facilities in the right-of-way fees. Jared, you're still going.
Happy to. This one starts on page.
Need a glass of water or anything?
After this.
All right.
One eighty-five of your packets. So previously, the city council adopted an ordinance that would regulate wireless telecommunications facilities in the right-of-way. This ordinance actually is housed under the Public Works Code, since it is in the right-of-way. As part of this ordinance creation, it does state that a fee schedule would need to be adopted by the city council, that would cover all associated costs with the application review, approval process, et cetera. So staff did work with one of the cell carriers, as well as our attorney, to create these fees to ensure compliance with the state requirements, state statute requirements. So the fees as proposed would be a five hundred dollar application fee for up to five sites, a hundred dollars for each additional site, three hundred dollars for excavation work in the right-of-way, that is an existing permit fee, but just including it in here. Two hundred and fifty dollar annual fee for government-owned co-location facilities, and then a twenty dollar times the number of sites annual fee for right-of-way occupancy for these telecommunications facilities. So those would be the three new fees, and then the one fee just reiterated, so we'd be looking for approval to allow us to, to adopt these fees so that we can charge them for any incoming applications.
All right. Thank you. Any questions? Yeah, Colin, go ahead.
Can you give any more background on how they came up with the fees? Maybe you don't know, but is there any rhyme or reason to it?
Yeah, so per state statute, any fees need to essentially cover the costs of our review, et cetera, so we couldn't just arbitrarily pick fees, but we wanted, we want to do a rough calculation, rough estimate of, you know, how much it's going to cost us to review, inspect, process, et cetera, and this is generally what we came up with, and then checking with the cell company, they did agree that this is pretty standard for fees, easily justifiable, so we don't get ourselves into trouble, and then the attorney also agreed that these would be pretty easily justifiable. Hard to, I'm sure we could go higher, I'm sure you could justify higher or lower, but they seem like pretty middle-ground fees, based on the explanations and review that we could come up with, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions, comments? Anybody I'd like to make a motion to approve this fee structure?
Move to approve.
Motion by Olson, second by Peterson that the council approves the wireless telecommunications facilities in the right-of-way fees. Any discussion? Barbara call the roll.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Scott Porczatsky.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Corey Nagel.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Colin Dijkstra.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Henry Velicker.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
All right, thanks, Barb. Jared, thank you. Next up, consideration of a raise for elected officials in twenty twenty-four, and I'll turn this over to Aaron.
Thank you, Mayor Smith. Council members, on page one eighty-six of your packets, you'll see a memo, and the summary of this, as we did have a couple items that were talked about between the last budget presentation and now, and Alderman Hagan brought up the idea, the thought or the discussion of looking into the impacts of a potential city council raise or all elected officials raise that mirrors city staff, which would be about four percent. Because city council and elected, and the mayor's position are, you know, much less, we tried to just round it to make it make sense, so the mayor's position at four percent, which is currently at twelve thousand two hundred and fifty dollars per year, would be an increase of about five hundred dollars, and that's four point zero eight percent. A council member's position would be an increase of about two hundred dollars per year, and that is four point one two percent, and that would amount to five thousand fifty dollars annually. So this is something that the budget can absorb. If you remember, when we presented the budget, we did have a surplus of around twenty thousand dollars. This is something that has to be voted on separately by city council as a separate item, it can't just be automatically adopted as a part of the budget. And as a reminder, if you guys do choose to take action and approve this, it will not go into effect until your position, the election cycle comes up and it turns over. So you wouldn't, in essence, be voting on your position as it is now, you'd be voting on the next person who's in that position, whether that's you or somebody else. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Aaron. Any discussion? Go ahead.
I've noticed some of the neighboring communities pay some of their city councilmen or women or persons, I'm sorry, based on, or at least partly, and based on meetings they attend. Have we ever discussed that, is it, or maybe throw it, I mean, I don't want to open up a rat's nest here or anything like that, but is that something that makes any sense or that we've already discussed?
We have discussed it in the past, but if you want to discuss it again, that's fine, we actually did discuss that when, when we were putting this together, so if you want to just talk about that a little bit.
Yeah, we did, and it's certainly something that could be moved to, I think, in communities that I've seen, I've seen some that are just like that, a per-meeting stipend, I've seen some that are like ours, just an annual stipend. A couple things we've talked about is, you know, I think it does create the opportunity of, we want to, I know the mayor tries to get everyone appointed on committees equally, if that is not possible, there are some committees that meet quarterly or semi-annually or annually, and how does that play out from a pay standpoint? I can tell you that I have looked at, actually, really the most recent one I found was a comparable from two thousand twenty of elected officials' pay. I can tell you Wapaka is right in the pay range in average, but that was two thousand twenty, so if there's been adjustments in those other communities since then, you know, maybe behind a little. And in that, our annual pay was kind of measured against the total potential pay with these per-meeting stipends, and that's kind of, we ended up in the average there. So the answer, yes, we can, we've talked about it, we've decided to bring it forward as just a straight four percent annual.
Thank you.
I don't think we, just to finish that, part of that too, you know, attendance for council members has not been an issue, and I think that would be helpful if it was an issue, and so I think that's why we thought maybe changing direction is probably not the right thing to do at this time, but again, you know, we can discuss it and decide whatever you want to do. Dimitri.
Is there a reason why we have to vote on this separate from other employee raises? I mean, could it just be dealt with each year as part of discussing the whole budget as it pertains to employees, and we're kind of the part-time employees? It feels a little weird to kind of be voting separately on it for ourselves, but if it's presented in the context of all public employees, then it seems a little bit more, like it makes more sense, in my opinion.
So that's something we talked about, and I think just the nature of, yes, it's voting for your position after it's elected, so it's not you, but it very well could be you, we just felt from a transparency standpoint that voting on it as a single item was the safest route to go, is what we felt most comfortable with. I will check on that, Dimitri, on if we could do it.
Well, I, I think I can answer that quite honestly, you cannot do that, because we tried to put in there a clause where we had a cost of living increase for council members, and that was deemed, that you could not do that, that you had to, you had to vote on it each year. So whether you could vote on employees raises at, employees raises at four percent and council, employees and council members four percent pay increase for the next year, I think maybe probably could do that if that was your question, but we'll look into that for sure. But for this year, we'd like to do it this way, because we're into the budget thus far, if you so choose.
Henry, I think in the spirit of transparency, you know, we're maybe moving to a world where employees will have the opportunity to question their compensation and will have to provide data, I guess I'd feel more comfortable if we had the comparables and we could kind of see where we're at, as sort of a benchmark for our employees, too, that, okay, here's, you know, here's where we're at. I don't, I don't know how hard it is to pull it together, who are the comparables, but it is a three-year-old number.
Well, what we're, what, and Henry, we could certainly do that, but what's on the agenda for tonight is this.
To get it in the budget.
Yeah.
But do you need a separate, would we need a separate, if it's in the budget, then it's done, we won't take it back up if we approve it tonight, because you need the number for the budget, right? And the budget's the, is next mon, is final budget's next meeting?
It is, so this won't change the levy amount, though. So this could be voted on, it could be tabled till later if you wanted that, and the budget, the way it is presented right now, could handle it, if that's what you're most comfortable with.
Well, I guess for me personally, I just, I think it sets the tenor, if we go down this road with the employees, that to see kind of where those numbers are. I don't know, but I don't want to gum up the works, because if you need the money and the budget, we got to get that done. I don't know if there's, you know, if it, if it can move, if it has to move forward, understood, but.
So I think the best way to answer that, from my standpoint, from the mayor's office standpoint, would be that I totally agree with you, that we should do comparables between communities, I think we should do the same thing with our employees, too, and we're moving forward towards that direction, but that's not this year, you know, that's something that we have planned for next year. So again, I don't disagree with you. I think it, I don't, I think it would be very difficult for, for staff to put together some numbers for you by the, in two weeks, to give you that number. We do know that this four percent amount is not excessive, you know, obviously, and so that's, and it wasn't more than what the employees are getting, so we felt that this was a good place to start. Obviously, you guys make the ultimate decision on this. Again, this request did not come from the mayor's office, but it did come from a couple of council members, too, so we're just bringing it forward.
So these numbers, current numbers are three years old, is that, was that the last time there was an adjustment to any of these numbers?
So I believe the, we looked at this, too, and just want to say a couple things, so this did come up in the last week or so, week, certainly would have been prepared with more numbers, I can certainly do that at the onset of next budget. Did reach out to some other communities, haven't got responses, so the thing I just referred to was the closest thing I could find, which was two thousand twenty. But looking back at our records, it looks like there was a motion to approve a raise in two thousand nineteen, so that would have went into effect at the two thousand twenty and the two thousand twenty-one elections at that time.
So this is something that we do annually, or is this by request? I mean, what?
It's been by request in the past.
Okay. And typically, how often are we doing this?
I can just tell you the last one was two thousand nineteen, so prior to that, I'm not sure.
I think it was fifteen years before that, so.
Okay.
That's two raises in, what, twenty years or whatever? If we pass this.
Yeah, I'm just looking for a little context, right? I don't.
And I wasn't on council before that, but that's about right, right?
Yeah, that's correct, it was a long time. I've been on council since two thousand and two, and up until two thousand nineteen, we didn't receive one raise.
Go ahead, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, you sort of answered the question, maybe was there discussion about this is going to be a, a common policy now, every year we give a raise to, or is it going to have to come up in a request? I guess, did you discuss, is this be something like that?
Well, I think that goes along with what Dimitri just asked. You know, whether we can do that, and we can find out if we can do that or not, but we are, we are under the understanding that you cannot, that this has to be separated.
Okay.
But if we're wrong, we'll certainly let you know on.
Because that kind of plays into, at least by decision-making, if we're going to be looking at this every year, because. Because obviously, we usually give employees some type of percentage raise every year, and so, okay. So it's something we're going to look at then and decide later about that aspect. And I do remember Kathy, when she was finance director, got some comparables back in, I think, 2019, and that's where those present numbers kind of came from, I believe. I don't know who she talked to. I just recall she talked to a few cities.
Yeah, very well.
So again, as Aaron said, when the budget was presented to you, there was an, there was about $29,000 available, is that right?
About 20, 20 to 21.
20 to $21,000 that was available in the budget surplus, budget that was presented to you. So if you did use this, this would use up $2,500 of that $21,000. So it would not change anything from what was presented to you, just go to a line item.
I'd make a motion to increase the city council member subsidy, I guess, is that what you call it, subsidy?
Stipend.
Stipend, I'm sorry, stipend to $5,050 annually, and the mayor's position to $12,750 annually.
We have a motion by Dijkstra. Do we have a second? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mayo, that we approve of increasing the council members' salary to, sorry about that, what is it, $5,000, $5,050? And then the mayors would, would go to $12,750. Any further discussion?
Can we clarify that? And I guess picking up on Scott's point, this would, for two election cycles, it would be for the 2024 election and the 2025 election, the 4%. Because you, you don't want to give one half the council a raise and not the other half. So is that what your intent was? One time, but cover the '24, '25 election? Am I, am I saying this correctly, Mayor?
You are. You are saying it right.
Right, because you can't, it doesn't take effect until after the election. So you have to be, you can't, you have to go through an election before you get the raise.
That is correct.
So it's really two elections.
Correct.
To encompass.
To get everybody.
Right.
That was my intention.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion? Barbara Colerole?
Colin Dijkstra?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Henry Velicker?
Aye.
Scott Porczatsky?
No.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Abstain.
Corey Nagel?
No.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Six ayes, motion carried.
Okay, so we had six ayes, two noes, one abstention. Is that right?
Yes.
So the motion passed. All right. Next up, we have a snow removal contract for 2023, 2024 at the Willpaca Municipal Airport. Aaron, are you doing this, or is Matt? You guys team doing this?
I can set it up, and Matt can answer any questions.
Okay.
Does that sound good, Matt? Awesome. All right, council members, thank you for the direction on the last memo. And this memo is on page 187 of your packet. So this would be the second year that we would enter into a contract, a one-year contract with Clad Arrow for snow removal services. Last year, it was done so because of the, the proposals that we got back through an RFP were exorbitantly high and were not going to fit within what we had budgeted within the airport fund. This year, we went out again for a one-year contract through an RFP process. We did get some questions and inquiries. We probably expected at least a couple of responses, and we ended up receiving zero responses. So Matt and Clad Arrow has agreed and put together some hourly costs to do it again for the winter of 2023 and 2024. I can say, attending most airport board meetings, hearing from most airport board users, that the snow removal went very, very well last year. Everyone was very satisfied with not only the quality, but the timeliness of it. The timeliness is important at the airport because specifically with the foundry departures and arrivals. And I know it's not something that, you know, Matt is willing to do it. He's got a good team that helps him, but not something he was jumping on, which is why we went out to RFP first. So I want to thank Matt and Clad Arrow for their willingness to take care of this really, really important service at the airport. And the, the estimated budgetary numbers between 9,000 and 15,000, depending on snow amounts, given the hourly rates, is very, very affordable compared to last con, past contracts and fits within the airport fund. If there's any questions, otherwise, I'd be, staff is recommending approval of the contract for snow more, snow removal services at the airport for the 2023, '24 winter with Clad Arrow at the hourly rates attached.
I'd make a motion to approve.
Second?
Motion by Hagan, second by Martin, that we approve of the snow removal agreement with Clad Arrow LLC at an estimated amount. Are we able to say, Matt, with confidence, that it is not going to exceed that $14,832, or is that just an estimate?
It would take a lot of snow to exceed that.
Okay. So if we were to say not to exceed $14,832, you would be comfortable with that?
Careful what you wish for.
I would.
Okay. All right. Paul, are you okay with that? Paul Hagan?
Yes.
Okay. And who made the second? I'm sorry. Dimitri? Are you okay with that?
Yep.
All right. All right. So for an amount not to exceed $14,832. Any discussion? Barbara Colerole?
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Corey Nagel?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Scott Porczatsky?
Aye.
Henry Velicker?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Colin Dijkstra?
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
All right. Next up, 2024, thanks, man, 2024 ambulance service contract between the city of Willpaca and Gold Cross Ambulance. Aaron, I know we have representation here, but you want to go ahead and set this up?
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor Smith. This memo is on page 189 of your packets. Every year, we, the city of Willpaca, signs an agreement with Gold Cross for ambulance services. Just a reminder to city council members, the city of Willpaca is a part of a consortium with 21 other municipalities. With the city of Willpaca, that'd be 22. This consortium allows us basically purchasing power to make ambulance services as affordable as possible for our area. This year would have been flat, actually, and was supposed to be, and we're bringing it to you last minute because there was a change in population. There were some certified letters sent to Gold Cross from the Veterans Home at King stating that they had dropped from, I don't know, 700-some residents to 300-some residents. And that impacted the per capita numbers, which is what resulted in the 2%, approximately 2% increase, which you can see in the memo. So services would remain unchanged. And I guess with that, Nick Romanesco is here with Gold Cross. And Nick, if you have anything you want to add, feel free to.
Yeah, thanks for having me. I'm Nick Romanesco. I'm the operations director for Gold Cross Ambulance. Just kind of a brief history of the contract and where we're at with this. We've been servicing the city of Willpaca and the surrounding municipalities since 2013. And we kind of really focus on a regional approach to the city of Willpaca and surrounding areas. So you guys contract for three ambulances, but really, you have access to 12 staff ambulances every single day. And then during the event of a large-scale incident, we're able to ramp up our services up to 18 ambulances. So paramedic-level ambulance service, we're the primary 911 ambulance in all of our service area. And we are a nonprofit entity that has member ownership with Theta Care and Ascension. There are two healthcare organizations that have oversight over Gold Cross. So we have a board of directors of eight individuals, four from Ascension and four from Theta Care, that really govern us as an organization, focusing on quality of service and value of service, are the two things we really focus on. And I'd just like to discuss a little bit about value of service. And if you look at historically, Gold Cross has been able to keep our subsidy within the city of Willpaca and the surrounding municipalities in that consortium, really level over the last, really, eight years. If you look back in 2015, it was $12.50 per capita back in 2015. And through, you know, just efficient deployment of resources, the regionalization model that we're able to obtain out here, we were able to keep that pretty flat. So really, in the last eight years, you've only seen about a 67% or 67 cent increase over the last eight years. So it's a great partnership. I can tell you, our regionalization is something that's happening more and more around the state. I sit on the board of the Professional Ambus Association of Wisconsin, and it's something that's being discussed as a cost-saving measure and also a staffing measure. EMS and healthcare in general, we're, we're facing some staffing crunches, and we're not having enough qualified people to do the work. So we're having to get creative with our service models. And one of those service models that you're going to see more and more pop up is, is the concept of a consortium or regionalization model to conserve costs, create efficient deployment models, and really get the best bang for your buck while reducing the, kind of the burden of staffing 24 hours a day, seven days a week as well. So something that we continue to see the need for grow a little bit. We're adding four municipalities into the contract this year with the absorption of Chi-Acton to offset some of that call volume or anticipating 140 call volume increase. We'll be adding a wheelchair van service out in this area as well. There's about 334 non-emergency discharges out of the hospitals that are turfed to the ambulance service because there's nobody else that can do this work out here. So oftentimes, they're calling for a wheelchair van service, there isn't one available. They have to move that patient out of the hospital, create room for the next patient, and they're calling the ambulance to do that work. So we'll be adding a wheelchair van service out here full-time as well to offset some of the increased call volume that we may anticipate seeing from the Chi-Acton area that we'll be adding into the consortium in 2024. So that's a, a brief overview of the contract, how we have set up. Another question we receive often is, is why is it an annual contract versus, you know, three, five, 10-year contract? And that's really because we evaluate costs on an annual basis to make sure it's affordable to everybody in, in the consortium. So every year is a, is a, a budget that we focus on just a 4% margin for Gold Cross to reinvest within the company. And the rest is, we try to make it as breakeven as possible. So that's why you see it in an annual contract versus a three-to-five-year contract, because it allows us really to make sure that we have the best, best value of service for you guys on an annual basis. With that, I'll take, any questions or comments?
Henry, go ahead.
I know we worked kind of diligently four or five years ago to get a, a first responders group going, and Gold Cross was very instrumental in sort of jump-starting that. Could you give us, how, how, how is that going?
Not very well. I, I don't think they're operational at all anymore. You know, it's, it's a volunteer service, so it's, it's reliant on people who want to do this. You're not the only municipality that sees, you know, a fall in, in volunteerism. So unfortunately, there isn't a lot of volunteer EMS, EMR services in Willpaca and the surrounding areas anymore.
All right. Any other questions, comments? Again, we'd be looking for a motion to approve this agreement with Gold Cross?
I'd make a motion that we enter into an agreement with Gold Cross for the year 2024, calendar year 2024.
Second?
Motion by Velicker, second by Olson, that we approve entering into an agreement with Gold Cross for ambulance services for 2024 in the amount of $84,183. Any discussion? Barbara Colerole?
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Henry Velicker?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Colin Dijkstra?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Scott Porczatsky?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Corey Nagel?
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
All right. Thanks for coming tonight. Appreciate it. All right. Next up, talking about districts again, here we have Resolution Number 1551. This is a resolution in support of levy increase to meet needs for the Willpaca Area Joint Fire District. Aaron, again.
Thank you, Mayor Smith. This memo, council member, starts on page 199 of your packet. So the summary of this is, we've discussed throughout the 2024 budget planning process that the Willpaca Area Fire District has proposed hiring a full-time chief within the 2024 budget. The impact of the city of Willpaca is pretty minimal. $1,821 is what we are planning for. And we're actually not requesting to utilize this one-time adjustment for the levy limit. However, the way that this works statutorily is that other municipalities that are a part of the district are impacted by greater dollar amounts in the city of Willpaca. And in order for any of those municipalities that are a part of the district to utilize this one-time levy limit adjustment, every municipality that's within the district has to pass this resolution supporting this. So although it's not our intent to use that, that levy limit adjustment, we do, are, we are bringing this forward to help our neighbors, so to speak, if they choose to do so. So that is what we're doing here tonight. So I guess the recommendation would be to approve the resolution in support of the levy increase to meet the needs of Willpaca Area Joint Fire District.
Thanks, Aaron. And I can just add to that, that when he talks about our neighbors, we, we are talking about the members of the Willpaca Area Fire District. And that would include our four surrounding townships of Farmington, Dayton, Willpaca, and Lind. Anybody have any questions? Anybody that'd like to make a motion? Pretty straightforward. Like Aaron said, we're not planning on using that to tax additionally to our residents. We think that the, just under $2,000 that it's increasing for our budget this year, we can handle within our budget. So we don't need to take advantage of this, but there are some townships that have seen some larger increases. So they could really use the ability to do this.
Move to approve.
Sorry.
Motion by Martin, second by Peterson, that we approve of Resolution Number 1551. It's a resolution in support of a levy increase to meet needs to Willpaca Area Joint Fire District. Any discussion? Barbara Colerole?
I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, Colin.
If a, a member municipality uses this, I, I don't know what to call it, the ability to do this levy increase, is that a one-time thing for all of the members, then? Then does that mean that we cannot do that in the future?
It means we cannot do it for the exact same budget increase. Now, if they were to bring a second full-time around and that increased it again, we could do it at that point.
Okay. All right.
Good question.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Clark? Colerole?
Colin Dijkstra?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Henry Velicker?
Aye.
Scott Porczatsky?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Corey Nagel?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
All right. Next item, this has to do, again, with, with our 2024 budget, and it goes along with the discussion that we had at the last meeting. After some discussion and looking into the research here, we are bringing it forward, and I'll have Aaron explain it to you. But we're bringing forward a couple of options for council to recommend that one or the other be put in the budget, or a different option that you might come up with. But Aaron, if you want to go ahead and, and explain what we have in the packet?
Thank you, Mayor Smith. Council members, this memo is on page 202 of your packet. So during our first draft of the budget... So during our first draft of the budget that was presented in the committee of the whole meeting, we had a lot of discussion over the debt service levy, what that increase would be, what tools may be available to offset it. Alderman Martin, in particular, had some conversations and questions around using that debt service fund balance. So that's what we're bringing back to you. The original, and what's outlined as Option 1 within this memo, and what was the original presentation from the committee of the whole in the end of October, did not include using any debt service fund balance. Currently, about $700,000 in the debt service fund balance to be used as deemed appropriate by city council. And when I say to be used as deemed appropriate, I want to specify that it has to be used on principal or interest payments. It's the only use that it can go towards. So Option 1 here utilizes none of that, and this is what that would look like from a $250,000 home in 2024. If Option 1 was selected, there'd be that 14.77% increase in the city levy, which means that assuming that that home went up by the exact same percentage as the average in the revaluation, that home would have approximately a $202 tax increase. And the debt service fund balance would remain at $700,000 to be used in future years as deemed appropriate. Option 2, and this was specifically brought up, this number, $250,000, we could use $250,000 of debt service fund balance to lower the need or lower the amount of levy needed for debt service levy in 2024. So if we use $250,000 out of fund balance, that would mean we would have an increase of approximately 8.61% rather than the 14.77%. Assuming a property's value increased by the average of the revaluation, once again, a $250,000 home would have an increase of about $100 in taxes in 2024. And that's city taxes, just so I'm clear on that, not the other taxing jurisdictions. In this option, the city would, their debt service fund balance would move from $700,000 to about $450,000 to be used as deemed appropriate in future years. Just want to note that this is a great conversation for city council to have, and it's an appropriate conversation for city council to have, and an appropriate one for city council to make. Both of these are viable options. It's just one leaves us a little less in the fund balance to use in future years. And it's also important to note that our target for 2025 will remain the same. So we really want to, need to, get to a debt service levy of 1.737 million by 2025 to meet our past debt obligations. So if we go with Option 1, we will have gotten most of the way there, and you could expect in planning exercises for taxes in a year from now to remain closer to flat. If we use the $250,000 this year and had the lesser increase in 2024, you could expect from planning purposes to have a higher increase comparatively from 2024 to 2025 to get to that target of 1.7, approximately 1.7 million. So that is the option that council has, and if anyone has any question, well, before I get to that, I do have a couple of attachments here that just kind of outline this. So you've seen this before. The first one is kind of the levy and mill rate projections with Option 1, using $0 of fund balance. You can see at the bottom, we just added a couple of simple lines, debt service fund balance utilization. You can see I have zero across the board. Of course, in future years, you can also, that can always be a decision to use small or large chunks of that to impact future debt service levies. But of course, once it's, there's, once it hits the $700,000, there's none left. Option 2 is reflected in the second mill rate and tax levy projection model, and you can just simply see the $250,000 being taken out of fund balance, and then we would have 450 left. And assuming it does not get used again through 2028, that's what it would look like. Of course, it could get used again until that was up. So with that, I will open it up for questions.
Okay, so I just want to make sure that everybody saw exactly what Aaron just showed you. So if you go back to page 204, all right, and you look at using the, not using any of the fund balance, then of course, you could see the, under the 2024 projection, you can see that there's a 14.77% increase in 2024. But then, as you could see, for the foreseeable future, that rate is going to stay closer to what the normal increase rate, you know, under 3% all the way. So it will stay pretty constant from 2025 to the future, at least as it's projected right now. If you go on to page 205, then you could see, again, under the 2024, that the increase is 8.61% in 2024, not the 14.77% anymore. But then you could see in 2025, you're going to see another increase that's exactly, very close to the same as it was in 2024. So you're just, you're just putting it out a year by doing that. And then you could see after 2025, then it levels off just under that 3% number as projected out for as many years as we can project with good information. So those are your options, unless you have another option that you would like to see. Again, we proposed, in the mayor's budget, we proposed this one that's on page 204, but I'm completely open, and staff, I think, too, is completely open to the option of, on page 205. Just knowing, though, that you will be looking at that increase again next year at the same percentage. Okay? Any discussion? Dimitri, go ahead.
Yeah, so the way I'm looking at this is, if we stick with Option 1, we're hitting up the taxpayers with the 15, I'm going to round, 15% increase in one year, followed by a 3% increase. So over a two-year period, you got about an 18% increase. With Option 2, you're spreading that 18% increase over two years. So you have like a 9% increase one year and a 9% the next. I think it's a little bit more palatable for the taxpayer, a little bit less of a shock than a 15% in one year.
Okay. Go ahead, Derek.
I'm going to go along with Dimitri on this, and I think I prefer Option 2. I'm not normally a can kicker, but I think this would be okay to kick this can down the road and spread it out a little bit and just hope, maybe hope the general economy gets better in the second year as well. People could afford that extra $100 again. I'm a little optimistic that way, but that would be my opinion.
Okay. Scott?
Can you refresh my memory? What was your reasoning behind the initial, this proposed budget of 14% as opposed to thinking about the second option? Was, what were your positives about doing it that way, I guess?
Yeah, good question, Scott. Just being, ultimately, just being conservative with the resources we have in fund balance and knowing that we have to get to that level soon. Those are, those are the two reasons.
Well, and remember, under levy limits, the way that we have been doing capital improvements in our community, and we don't want to stop doing capital improvements in our community, the only way we could do that is by borrowing money. So we have in our budget in the future about a million and a half dollars each year to budget for that. So we wanted to make sure that we had some buffer there in case we had a year where it maybe didn't make sense to borrow a million and a half dollars and maybe only borrow 750,000. So that still gives us a little bit of that option, but it doesn't give us as much of that option when you go from 700,000 down to 450,000. That's the reasoning behind it.
Okay.
But again, you know, I could see either way, to tell you the truth. Henry, go ahead.
Thanks, Mayor. Did our financial advisors have an opportunity to comment on Option 2? And did they feel like that could hurt our bond ratings and future borrows?
Yeah, so I've talked to Justin Fisher about this, and he said, no, it's a policy decision. Council can decide either one, just as long as, he said, as long as council knows that they have to get to that number in 2025, was his. And to answer your last question, no, it does not negatively impact.
Unless we don't get to that number in 2025.
Right, then that would negatively.
Right. So either way, we have to get to that number.
Yeah. Could we crap, well, we can't really, can we tie the hands of a future council? Could we follow Dimitri's thought and lock it in that we're doing it with the commitment in 2025 that we're going to hit that number? Or can we do that? Is it more of a consensus principle thing and not any legal basis?
Well, I don't, I don't know that we want to tie future council's hands, but they have that same opportunity next year because they'll have $450,000 in there, and they could choose to use that 450 to keep it lower for next year, too, if they so choose. Or they could choose to increase if they wanted to by increasing the rate. So, yeah, I don't think you can do that, Henry, although I think that we're, we can all see the writing on the wall there that we have no option but to get to that number in 2025. Colin?
Do we know the numbers of the other taxing jurisdictions for the city, namely the county and the school district?
I don't.
And school district's flat, as I understand.
We got the school district and Fox Valley Tech, but we are waiting on the county still.
Our school district and Fox Valley flat?
Uh, I don't have it on.
So their mill rate went down, but the school district's levy went up slightly.
Just a little, right?
Yeah, not substantially.
But according to their paper, the article in the paper, it sounded like doom and gloom for the future.
Yeah, I can't comment on that.
Yeah, I guess we can't, but I guess a little bit, as a citizen, you have to be aware, you know, if we try and smooth out our number, but somebody else rocket ships next year, it's not going to make ours look smooth, you know? And it might be better overall for a citizen taxpayer to pay it this year instead of getting rocked with a big jump with one of the other taxing jurisdictions, plus the 8% that we're, we'll have to jump next year. So I don't know that that's a, I don't know if that's relevant to what we think about, but it crossed my mind that. And the flip side of it is, in my opinion, the importance of doing our revaluation more consistently is, I think, a positive effect on our city. And so if our taxpayers have this idea, right or wrong, that a revaluation includes a jump in their taxes, you know, maybe that's reason enough to spread this out over time. So I'm kind of conflicted myself about which way to go here, but anyway.
Well, and the answer to your first question is, we will know that number by the time that you vote on the budget at our meeting on the 21st. We'll know what the other numbers are going to be, whether they vote on it before that or not, but we'll have a good indication of what those numbers are.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, all of those things crossed our mind. Paul?
So the debt service fund balance is like a reserve in that fund.
Correct.
And we're proposing to reduce that fund balance by 35% approximately. I'm going to kind of counter what Dave had to say. He hopes the economy will improve. If it doesn't improve and we go into a recession and we have just spent 35% of that fund balance, our hands are going to be tied, to an extent, for future projects that we'd borrow money for, and I'm not comfortable doing that myself.
So, Mayor, can I just clarify something? So, so this money that's in this fund balance cannot be used on a direct capital expense. This money can only be used to pay for debts associated with borrows that we've already done. So, so really, in the capacity in which we are using this, which we're talking about using right now, is the only singular capacity in which it could be used, which is to pay for principal and interest obligations.
But along with that, though, Paul's comment, you were going to say something, too. Sorry for interrupting you, but Paul's comment is valid, though, because it is going to, it could affect future borrows for us. If our fund balance is lower, we might not be willing to borrow money to do capital projects in the future.
Yep, so it could affect future borrows if you consider using this to offset debt payments. So not directly, but indirectly. Yeah.
Either way, it's, it still works out. Yeah, it's, it's, it was a good enough topic that we felt like we needed to have that discussion here, and the best way to have that discussion was with giving you a couple of options to have that discussion. We can, Henry, go ahead.
No, go ahead. Fisher thought, Mayor.
I was just going to say, we can make that decision tonight because that would be very helpful because we, we do post this resolution. Do we still do it in the newspaper? Yeah, we posted it in the newspaper, and we also posted, of course, out on the bulletin board, if they still call it bulletin board, too, out in the lobby. So, but we want to make sure that the numbers that we're showing are what we're looking at passing. So that's why we're hoping that you can lead us in the right direction, in your direction, in the direction you want us to do tonight. So, go ahead.
I think what I'm conflicted about a little bit is, we understand staff is using an average, but that implies that there's half the people, or many people, median might be a better number, but there's going to be a lot of properties that will not go up the 14%. And I'm making this broad statement that a house under $200,000, the economies of those residents are going to be a little more strained than somebody that's in a house of $450,000. And my final thought is, you think of the debt service fund as a rainy day fund, it's not raining yet. Maybe next year it's going to rain. So maybe we're trying to maybe anticipate a problem that we're just not sure what's going to happen? So to be a little more conservative, knowing that the properties, many of our properties are under $200,000 or a quarter million, they're not going to see the potential increase that you're seeing on paper right here. It would be some magnitude of less, whether it's 25% or half of 200, whatever. I don't know, that's, I can't get that, get my head around that totally, but not everybody is going to go up. You have to have a number, and we're using an average, but there's going to be a lot of people that won't hit that average number. A lot of properties, I should say. I don't know, did I say that correctly?
Yeah.
In a way that it's understood.
So, yeah, I think what you're saying is absolutely true. The reason we use the average is, it's really.
Well, I understand. It's available and it's.
And then on the other side, there's going to be some that are over that, so.
But again, I would venture the comment that, you know, nobody wants taxes to go up, and I think all their dykes made us think about it again, that this is going up because of a much. Alder Dykstra made us think about it again, that this is going up because of a much-needed capital project. And it went up tremendously, like all public projects have, and it was a project 20 years into making, and we need to do this project, and so we shouldn't shrink from the idea that it's going to cost money to put this building up. When we were originally, we were under 6 million, and now we're up to 10 million or something.
Seven.
Seven to 10, just by the timing. So I'm kind of leaning towards, we're not in any kind of recession right now, so let's not dip into our reserves at this point and be a little more conservative.
Dimitri, go ahead.
On the flip side, or following that line of logic in the other direction, you know, there are some people, if the average for the residential properties has gone up 60% of the assessed values, there are some people that have gone up 80%, 90% even, and they're going to have 30%, 40% increase in their property taxes, and now we're going to tack on another 15% on top of that. For some people, it's going to be quite a shock, and so I'd like to mitigate that to some extent.
And obviously, that number is larger now, too, because we're using an average home of 200 and... Believe it or not, in Opaaca, we're using an average home of 250,000 for years, including not too long ago, a year or two ago, where we were using an average home price in Opaaca was $100,000. So you're, you know, you're seeing that impact when we state it as a $250,000 home, that increase going up versus $100,000. Again, I... It's a great discussion to have. I think, I really don't think you can go wrong either way. But again, one way, you have to explain it, two years in a row, why we're going up, and the other way, you have a one-time jump because of a large asset that we're adding to our community, and it's pretty easily explainable. But over a two-year period, it's pretty explainable, too. So it's really, it's really what you feel comfortable with. Dave?
One comment about that also. If we spread it out, we're not getting hit with the blame for taking all the heat on raising taxes. We're doing our best to cut it down now. We know we're going to have about the same rate next year, but if it goes way up, well then it's the high school, or it's the valley tax, or somebody that's making it go up this year, it's not the city. We're going up, and then we're going to try to stay at that level next year. You can take whatever you want to take it, I guess.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We're all taxpayers of Opaaca, and county, and Fox Valley Tech, and so, in essence, we're taking care of everybody here.
Yep, you're right.
Mayor, I'd like to move that we adopt option number one.
I'll second it.
Yeah, we have a motion by Mayo and a second by Olson that we adopt option number one, which was the option that was proposed at the last council meeting. Any further discussion? All right, no other discussion? Go ahead.
So as we vote now, if we vote, if the noes win it, that means we're automatically going to option two?
No.
No.
Somebody would have to make a...
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Okay, Claire Smith? All right. Any other discussion? Barbara, call the roll. You're voting in favor of option one here, if you vote. Sorry, Barb.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Corey Nagel?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
No.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
No.
Scott Porczatsky?
No.
Henry Velicker?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Colin Dykstra?
Aye.
Six ayes, three noes. Motion carried.
Thank you. Thank you for the discussion, everybody. All right, good discussion that we had. All right, let's move on. Aaron, thank you for all your work on this, and Stephanie, of course, you, too. Next up, we have... We have adoption of a strategic plan for the City of Opaaca 2024-2027, and Aaron, I'll turn this over to you again.
Thank you, Mayor Smith, council members. This one is on page 206 of your packet. I don't want to go through the whole background again. We all know we had updates in July, July 11th and 12th.
Aaron, can I just interrupt you just for a second? If you guys don't mind, let's take like a 10-minute break here, all right? Then we'll be in it a little bit better if we take a break first. Otherwise, we're going to just say, okay, good, Aaron.
You need a motion for that?
We understand what we're on. We're on number 14, which is the adoption of the strategic plan. So again, I'll turn it over to Aaron.
Thank you, Mayor Smith. Again, council members, this one's on page 206 of your packet, and you guys saw, I believe, a version of the strategic plan come back to you in the first week of October. We kind of treated it as a first reading of an ordinance, so then city council members could look at it, provide feedback. And actually, we did get the feedback, and we got good feedback primarily from Alderman Dykstra. Thank you, Colin. But the only thing is, we met about Friday before the next council meeting, so it took an extra council meeting to get the things changed and talk with staff and make sure everyone was on board and understood the proposed changes. One thing I can say is that the proposed changes aren't largely substantial in nature. It doesn't change our goals or our priorities. However, there were changes, just in wording, that really felt like it was hitting on more strategic-type language. To have a non-professional term, we kind of took some wishy-washy statements out, and it also eliminated some redundancies throughout the plan. I'm going to go through, and I won't read all of these, but I will... And I know council saw the red line, so you had a chance to go through it, but a lot of the ones that you see straight crossed out with nothing else, either that is repeated somewhere else in the document, we felt like, or it was added somewhere else in the document under the appropriate headline. Let's just go through here. Let's go to C here. First page, accelerate economic development, and then C, strengthen economic development partnerships. So we had a lot of different items that just spoke to market this, market that, put these things at events, tell people about it. Market TIF 11, market TIF 12, market the downtown. Well, we had a conversation, and then we had a follow-up conversation with Jared. It's like, well, the reality is, is we are not professional marketers, and why not just focus on developing and executing a marketing plan that would cover all of this, rather than have these, all of these things? So that was added. Let's see. Just some simple language. Here's a good example of it, under D, retaining existing businesses and attracted and targeting new businesses. Develop a plan to visit each major employer. Don't develop a plan to do it, let's do it, okay? There's some of these things that consider, evaluate, all of those things. I think we made it more actionable than considering to do some of these things. Here's an example of kind of addressing how or why we're going to, or how we're going to do something. So attract new employers. Identify and actively reach out to recruit businesses, which will attract younger families. How are we going to do that? By attending at least one commercial conference per year. This has been something we've talked about for a long time, and how do we actually become more effective in attracting some maybe retail-type businesses, which the community has said that we have, that they have wanted? And we have consistently heard, you should really attend a commercial conference, and we have really failed to do that and put the money and invest to send a staff member to one of those things. So that's one actionable item. So those are the types of things you'll just see throughout this. Those are the types of changes you'll see. Again, really, no changes from a heading or subheading or a priority standpoint, but Colin, I do want to thank you for sitting down, looking at it, having those conversations with me, and is there anything else you want to add to that?
No.
Okay. So with that being said, I think now we've had several weeks that have passed since that. I think this is a version, and the clean version is right after the marked-up version. I think it's to the point where we can vote on it, because I haven't heard any other feedback from council members or staff, and I would propose or ask council to consider recommending or adopting the strategic plan for the City of Opaaca from 2024 through 2027.
Okay, question. All right, go ahead.
Thank you. So we met this past summer. Are we going to be meeting every summer to review this, or is this going to be something that is reported back to annually or at the end of the plan? I mean, what...
Good question. So I think what we want to do, and this is another thing that was changed, I think one of our language items said, well, let's report on initiatives, and we changed it to let's report on results. So what you'll see as a council is you'll see city staff periodically throughout the year, in city council meetings, report on the results of the plan and how we're doing. We will not go through like we did this summer. We won't go through that every year. We would plan to do that at the end, in 2027, so about a three-year plan, unless circumstances really change, and there's something that drives a need to do it sooner. And who knows, maybe there's something that drives a need to do it later, but no, what we did this summer is not something we anticipate doing every year.
Henry, go ahead.
The, these new committees we've appointed and are working with, it seems like their work can kind of dovetail and support this, but what happens is something a year from now, one of the committees comes up with some, something new, and council likes it, and it might not be right... We can tweak this, right, at some point, or make an amendment to it, or how would we do that?
Yes, so great, good question. So it's my opinion that strategic plans should be fluid documents, because things are always changing, especially when you have a strategic plan that we're saying is three years long.
Right.
And we've, and we have executed a lot of things that have not been on our strategic plan, but there are opportunities that came up that maybe couldn't have been foreseen, and it was the right thing to do at that time. So we can also execute those opportunities, even though they're not on the plan. Also, we could add things to the plan at any time.
Okay. Okay, any other questions? Looking for a motion to approve the strategic plan?
Move to approve the strategic plan for 2024 to 2027.
Second.
Motion by Nagel, second by Hagan, that we approve of the strategic plan for the City of Opaaca 2024-2027. Any discussion? Barbara, call the roll.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Henry Velicker?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Colin Dykstra?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Scott Porczatsky?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Corey Nagel?
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
Thank you all for your work with that.
Yeah, Aaron, thanks. Next up, we have resolution number 1552. This is a resolution supporting Snowfighters Appreciation Day. Justin?
Thank you, Mayor. I have four items in a row, so I'll try and be as efficient with everyone's time as possible. If you have any questions or comments as I'm rolling, feel free to interject, but this first one was something that was started by my predecessor, John Edelbeck, and I like to keep it going. It just shows our appreciation for our crews that provide a tremendous service to our city. It is, pretty much everyone in Public Works does this work, responding 24/7, coming in at midnight or at 2:00 a.m. to get the roads cleared by 6:00 or 8:00, so that our city can function safely and not impact the economy and the community. We do have a couple guys from Parks Department that assist in that as well, in the Battle Let's Snow with Us. And of course, PD with the Night Patrol keeps an eye on the roadway conditions for us. So it's a team effort, and definitely their sacrifices for the greater good, I think we should recognize that every year at council, so... Guess I need approval for this?
Well, we'd like to get approval for placing it on file. Our clerk has made, I guess, a question to you, Justin, so I'll ask you for her, but she's thinking that instead of being a resolution, that this actually should be a proclamation?
Sure. Move for that.
Yeah, I mean, in the future, or just thinking? Don't you think?
I don't know what the difference is, to be honest, but...
Well, there's a lot of whereas's, so that makes it a proclamation.
Okay.
Don't you love it when he's honest?
Well, with the advice of the clerk, we'll do that next year.
Thanks, Barb. I'll blame it on her, of course. All right, so we just make a motion so that we can place it on file, that we understand and appreciate them, and would like to place this on file.
Move to approve resolution 1552.
Second.
Motion by Dykstra, second by Olson, that we approve of this resolution. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Again, say no? Motion carries. All right, renew agreement for technical services with Strand. You're up again, Justin.
Thanks, Mayor. So this one starts on 233. There's a lot of attachments. See, Brandon Herbert is with us in attendance tonight from Strand. You may have recognized him from previous council meetings, but if you have questions, I guess, for us, again, feel free to ask. So this technical service agreement with Strand started in 2018, and largely, we use it for development reviews. So we have development that comes forward, they submit their plans, Strand reviews them for us and helps us, I guess, Jared and I, in the zoning and development side. Their time is then charged back to the development, and we really don't see an expense of that. On the other hand, this agreement can be used to utilize their professionals, their experts, which we've done a handful of times for grant submissions and for some utility issues. There's a summary of that breakdown in an attachment. So starting in 2018, it was a two-year agreement. After that two-year agreement, renewed it for another five years, and it is set to expire by the end of 2024. But that's not the main reason we're looking for a renewal tonight. The main reason is because these, this agreement has a maximum amount that can be authorized by staff. That was done initially just to control the amount of, I guess, with the procurement policy, how much, I guess, authorization we're allowed to give to them. And like I said, a majority of this cost has gone to development reviews, which means that development has increased, and we're pushing that limit. So we're looking to increase that limit from 25,000 up to 50,000, and then at the same time, since we don't have to come back again next year, to increase the contract for an additional two years at the end. So Aaron had up there on page 235, this is the breakdown of where the cost has gone for this agreement. Everything in that, I guess, salmon, the way it looks up on the screen, is the development. Those have been reimbursed. The green is with the utilities. Those came out of the utility funds, and the blue has been, the blue and the gold have been for grant submission. The gold was the solar, which 80% of that should be reimbursed. The other two were unsuccessful, so... Bottom line is a total of just over 19,000, which 88% of it, or 87 and a half, excuse me, has been reimbursed by outside funds. So let me skip ahead, excuse me, for just a second. The two documents are on 245 and 246. These are the actual amendments to the agreement, and they just spell out, looking for that increase in that compensation, again, from 25,000 to 50,000, and then increase the time that the agreement is from 2025 up to 2027.
Thanks, Justin. And that, that increase from 25 to $50,000, that's the total, that's not a per year amount, that's a total amount.
Correct.
Right.
Correct, it's a rolling total, so.
Okay. All right, and you both feel comfortable with that number that you're not going to have to worry about that? Understanding that most of this is being reimbursed to us anyways?
Right.
You still feel comfortable with that?
Right, if at some point we got to come back earlier, that's just a good sign in general, so. I mean, the intent was to use it primarily for development reviews and it's, that's the way it's been used, so.
Okay, all right. Makes good sense. Anybody have any questions? Again, this is being recommended by Justin. Does seem to make sense to me, so we'd be looking for a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Hagan. Second by Velicker, that we approve of the agreement with Strand by increasing the compensation up to $50,000 for the contract and extending the contract from 2025 to 2027. Any discussion? Barbara Colerole.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Henry Velicker.
Aye.
Scott Porczatsky.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Corey Nagel.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Colin Dykstra.
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
Thanks, Justin. I almost feel like I should have your man say something for having to sit through this meeting, but he might be okay with that. All right, sounds good. Next up, we have a US Cellular lease agreement on the Shambol Water Tower Amendment Number Four. And Justin, you, as you said, this is you again.
Yes, so we have a lease agreement with US Cellular to lease out, I guess, space on the top of our water tower. This is amendment to that lease and this is number four. I guess a little bit of history, in 2020, they did quite a large expansion and that was the third amendment and that increased our lease payment that we required from them. This latest amendment is basically a replacement of, I believe it's four antennas or pieces of equipment up there and then redoing some wiring. So the changes are pretty small or minor. Need approval because we are adjusting a lease agreement or mending that, so I can't do that at staff level. And again, there's quite a bit of attachments where the original agreement is after the memo and follows up with the last amendment. And then finally on sheet, dang it, excuse me. Sheet 270 is the fourth amendment. So this basically lays out the whereses again, where the terms are not really changing, but they are just adjusting their equipment that is up there. The lease payment is not, we're not recommending a change in that. 272 shows a colored picture of what is happening up there on our tower. If you could scroll that, please. So the red is what they are replacing. And again, it's four pieces of equipment that are just being, the older ones are being removed, new ones are being put on, they're going to redo some wiring. So they're not taking up any more space, so that's the reason why we're not really doing a change in terms as far as payment. So they're just updating their equipment and then with that, this amendment is required, so. Open to discussion, otherwise looking for, approve this fourth amendment.
Justin, you just might want to change the P to a B for Shambol instead of Shampo on that description.
What sheet was that?
We'll find it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, it's on page 270 of your packet. I'm reading it now, it's in that very first.
And I'll move to approve.
Well, not the first, but it, you'll see it. It's one of the whereses.
Second.
Excuse me. Motion by Olson, second by Velicker, that we approve of entering into this new lease agreement with US Cellular for Shampo Water Tower Amendment Number Four. Sorry, any discussion? Barbara Colerole.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Henry Velicker.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Scott Porczatsky.
Aye.
Colin Dykstra.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Corey Nagel.
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
All right, another one here, Wisconsin Public Service easement in Brainerd Bridge Park.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor, one more time. So this memo is on 274. This is Wisconsin Public Service. They are looking for an easement from us in Brainerd Bridge Park. I'm doing it because the service goes to our lift station. It is in within the park. Obviously, this is not the first time Laura's heard about it. But in general, WPS is doing a larger project. They're targeting for the first quarter of 2024 to put a number of overhead lines underground, kind of focusing on the west, northwest areas of the city. With that, past Brainerd Bridge Park where we have an overhead service to our lift station that would be put underground. And because that lateral or their service line would be on our property, we need this easement or they need this easement from us, excuse me. They have an exhibit on 278 which shows approximately where this line would be put. Right there, there you go. So there'd be a transformer box in the right of way and the line going underground to about the horseshoe area and then over to, we'd take it from there over to our lift station. So this is actually a really good benefit to the lift station and also the city, so we definitely are looking to do this. There will be some costs, the sewer department to upgrade some of our equipment that is at that lift station, but that's just going to come out of our maintenance budget for next year. We're expecting no more than $2,000 to upgrade basically our equipment on our lift station. So this easement from WPS has an easement document that gets recorded at the county. The exhibit says temporary, it's temporary now. When they do the work, if there's no changes, they'll just put no changes and make it permanent and then get it recorded. If there is some changes out in the field, they'll make those adjustments and I don't have, we don't have to come back for a secondary approval, so. So looking for approval to get this easement for WPS.
All right, sounds good.
Move to, move to approve.
Second. Motion by Hagan, second by Peterson, that we approve of Wisconsin Public Service request for an easement in Brainerd Bridge Park. Any discussion? Barbara Colerole.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Scott Porczatsky.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Corey Nagel.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Colin Dykstra.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Henry Velicker.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
All right, thank you, Justin.
Thank you much.
All right, turn the microphone next to you there. Next up, approval of a cemetery tractor purchase. Laura?
Thank you, Mayor. So our cemetery is in dire need of a new tractor for digging graves and we also use it a lot for other cemetery and parks, emergency related jobs and other maintenance jobs. For example, if a one of our sprinkler systems breaks, we can go and dig and fix the job ourselves. So our current tractor can only lift two thirds of its intended capacity. It is 23 years old and has 3,100 hours of operation on it. It's leaking fluid and has definitely caused an uptick in equipment maintenance. So our staff was working with wires to see if they could get their, a tractor special ordered with a backhoe on it and wires agreed. And so our cemetery staff got to use that for two weeks and it was a great fit. So they have gotten other quotes and nothing has come close to it. So we would like to purchase the tractor from wires without going out to bid because again, wires special order the tractor for us. There are similar tractors at New Holland from Swiderski and that has a two year warranty compared to the wires 10 year warranty. Also, Swiderski wouldn't allow us to demo any of their tractors with a backhoe attachment. Let me back up and just say that this tractor will be paid for by the cemetery's perpetual care fund and we can't do a lease option because of the special attachment backhoe that we need for our cemetery tractor. Additionally, the Swiderski and Reister and Schnell quotes came in higher than the wires quote at $52,000 and $48,872 respectively compared to the wires quote at $45,000. We also are really concerned about the time it might take to get other tractors to get the, not only the tractors, but then to get the backhoe attachments. It could take months to get those in and we may not have months to wait with our current tractor. And this is a really time sensitive type of thing. We would certainly don't want an inoperable tractor if we need to dig some graves. So we are looking to approve the purchase of the wires tractor for the cemetery without going to bid and not to exceed $45,000. The Parks and Rec Board added that not to exceed the $45,000 and approved that last Thursday.
All right. Future FYI, we have to have pictures, of course, of what they look like.
Oh, I will do that in the future, thanks.
Thank you. Anybody like to make a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion by Olson, second by Peterson, that we approve of the purchase from Wires Equipment Incorporated, a new tractor with a loader and backhoe for an amount not to exceed $45,000. Any discussion? With the funding coming out of?
The Cemetery Perpetual Care Fund.
Thank you. All right, any other discussion?
Well, Mayor, just to hop on procedure a little bit, do we need to take action to waive our procurement requirements?
I'm having a hard time seeing where we haven't followed our procurement because
You're getting pricing, you got pricing. It's just not a sealed bid, but it's quotes. And, yeah, okay.
I don't know that answer, Henry, to tell you the truth.
Well, that they need it and so, and they've got the pricing. It's fine.
Okay, all right, so we have a motion and we have a second. Any other discussion? Oh, go ahead, Cory.
What, what are you doing? I'm just curious, what, what do we do with the old equipment?
So that will go on the surplus and then we could recoup some of the money back into the perpetual care fund based on the selling of the old equipment.
Any other questions? Good question. Barbara Colerole?
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Henry Velicker.
Aye.
Scott Porczatsky.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Corey Nagel.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Colin Dykstra.
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
Thank you.
All right, Laura, thank you. Next up, we have license report number 1647. This is an arcade amusement device license. This has to do again with, we had the new owner of Courtside in earlier of that property and so he needs to now purchase his own arcade and amusement device license. So that is in license report number 1647. Again, we'd be looking for a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Peterson, second by Porczatsky, that we approve license report number 1647. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Against, say no?
No.
No.
We have seven ayes, two noes, motion carried. Next up, same thing, license report number 1648. This is for a dance hall permit for that same property and it's basically changing hands here. So we would need a motion to approve 1648.
Move to approve 1648.
Motion by Dykstra.
Second.
Second by Nagel, that we approve license report number 1648. Any discussion? All in favor, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Against, say no? Motion carried. Page 292, license report number 1649. You can see that there are four, four names on there for operators or bartenders license. Again, just looking for a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mayo, second by Dykstra, that we approve license report number 1649. Any discussion? All in favor, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Against, say no? Motion carried. Communications recommendations of the mayor. Justin, I want to pick on you just for a second. Can you just talk about leaf pickup a little bit? Is it still ongoing and?
Leaf pickup is still ongoing. It'll surely go through the end of the month. We have the wards scheduled and we target the wards listed in the week. I don't have it memorized, so excuse me for not knowing that. But besides doing that ward, we always go around and continue on after we get that ward cleared up. So it's a revolving door. We know that leaves drop at different times of the year, but we just encourage residents to get those out to the curb, you know, when they're on the weekends or whenever they can.
All right, thanks, Justin. Department heads, anything else that you want to let council know about tonight? Council members? Anything? Okay, we'd be looking for.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Olson, second by Hagan, that we adjourn till our next regular scheduled meeting, which is Tuesday, November 21st, 2023, subject to call. All in favor, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Against, say no? Motion carried, we are adjourned at 8:17 PM.